I'll see what they should be saying.
Close the door, Dr. Lenny, stop lying, because she was really upset with him.
Yeah.
Coffee, Doc.
Yeah.
I have a little tape and we can find it.
Yeah.
Get it to me.
Yeah.
We're always together.
I just wanted to make sure.
They're incredible.
One, I want to take you all to my colors.
But.
I did this work for.
Basically.
I, uh, yeah, no, we can keep all this stuff for coffee.
Okay.
Actually, I'm sure it's, uh, okay.
Okay.
So.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I think it's coming back.
Oh, really?
I don't know.
I'm sorry. I'm sorry. I didn't, I thought you were. So we did, we did the best we could. Um, we were doing, we, we, we got, we were doing the, we were doing the other. We, 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 uh, we're doing that again. Uh, we had, I can't remember. And then we, we, we had another one. And there was, uh, Amy, right? I said, well, okay, we do it. I, I don't know if they understand. It was supposed to be some R and D. And it was, it was, it was, it was quite close to the, uh, I don't know. And they, they, they were, so.
I'm three hundred there.
Um, I, 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 I used to have them. I didn't take a hike. It's still right here.
The guy gave me back his check. I guess they got the company. They had already cut me a check. They didn't have my information from my accident. So he had. He's like in an aftermarket. I'm like, aftermarket? Do you have the game? Daughter. Oh, shit. It's two dollars a pack. Yeah. How are you? It's uh, it's crazy. You can be late, can never be early. Play cluster, can never be early. That's what they tell us. Fire if they go around. That's what they tell us to track me too, like I have a task. No, can't be early. If somebody comes in. It's gonna be an old thing to be in trouble. Baseball. More than I'll find, maybe not. Nice ball. She's might get her.
Good evening and welcome to the June 2nd, 2025 meeting of Bedford City Council. Could please rise and join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Call the roll, please.
Longino?
Here.
Coche?
Here.
Spinks?
Here.
Salvi?
Here.
Bluehearti?
Here.
Smith?
Here.
I have a motion to excuse Councilman Asbury from the meeting tonight. By Salvi, second by Bluehearti. Call the roll, please.
Longino?
Here.
Coche?
Yes.
Spinks?
Here.
Salvi?
Yes.
Bluehearti?
Yes.
Smith?
Here.
Two years before you.
Yes.
They're sleeping.
Uh, Council, you have the minutes of a work session of May 19, 2025. Any corrections to those? Seeing none, can I have a motion for acceptance? By Bluehearti, second by Spinks. Call the roll, please.
Longino?
Yes.
Coche?
Yes.
Spinks?
Yes.
Salvi?
Yes.
Bluehearti?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
And you have the minutes of the regular meeting of May 19th, 2025. Any corrections to those? Seeing none, can I have a motion for acceptance by Smith, second by? Somebody, Salvi? Call the roll.
Longino?
Yes.
Coche?
Yes.
Spinks?
Yes.
Salvi?
Yes.
Bluehearti?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
And we have a presentation tonight. Guessing it's not, oh, Nicole is here, I'm sorry. I saw the young man here. Nicole McKinney Johnson, President and CEO of the Cleveland Rape Crisis Center. Please.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council, and community. Again, it is a pleasure to be here with you all. Again, my name is Nicole McKinney Johnson. I have the honor of serving as the President and CEO of the Cleveland Rape Crisis Center. I am so grateful for the chance to share a few words with you, not only about the work that we do across Northeast Ohio, but most importantly, about the services we provide to the people that live in your city. As some of you might know, this past April, we marked Sexual Awareness Assault Month, a time when we come together across our sectors, our cities and counties to shine a light, unfortunately, on the painful truth. Sexual violence impacts every community, but awareness is more than just a month-long campaign. Awareness ignites action, and that's why I am here tonight to invite you all to take action with us to help build a community where survivors are believed the first time and supported and that they are never alone. For over 50 years, the Cleveland Rape Crisis Center has stood as a pillar of hope, healing and advocacy for survivors of rape, sexual abuse, and human trafficking. We are one of the largest and most comprehensive rape crisis centers in the nation, and we serve thousands each year throughout Cuyahoga, Ashtria Bula, Geoga, and Lake Counties. But what matters most to me this evening is that our services are known throughout our local communities. Everything that we do at the Cleveland Rape Crisis Center is free. So our commitment is personal. Our presence is just minutes away. Our local office is right at Shaker Square, closest to here. At our offices, we offer 24/7 support through our crisis hotline, through text and online chat, ensuring that everyone that's in crisis does not have to help and does not need to wait. We have trauma-informed therapy and counseling for all survivors of all ages, whether the assault happens days, months, or even decades ago. The average call that we get, the occurrences, happened about 10 years ago. Victims assistance and advocacy helps survivors navigate complex systems like law enforcement, the courts, schools, and hospitals. We have a prevention and education department that goes to the schools and to community spaces to equip young people and adults with the knowledge to prevent sexual violence and support our survivors. We have curriculum from 3 to 93, so we literally meet the survivor where they're at so that they can learn and get to a bridge to healing. Everything, again, that we do at CRCC is guided by our values. We are our survivor focus, we are survivor center, we're trauma-informed and deeply committed to equity. We meet people, again, where they are culturally, emotionally, and geographically. That's why our presence in Bedford is so important to us. We ask that leaders, all like yourselves, to use your voices in the rooms where I am not. So if you hear things as relates to, unfortunately, sexual violence and/or educational outreach opportunities, mention Cleveland Rape Crisis Center and then give Nicole a call. So we are the champions of prevention. Also, like I said, in our schools, we support survivors through policy partnerships and presence because we know that when survivors are supported, communities are stronger. So again, thank you for this opportunity. I invite you to stand with us in a community where everyone is safe, supported, and mostly empowered. Thank you for your time and partnership and your shared commitment to the future to free us all of sexual violence. Thank you so much. Wanted to know if there was any questions?
Question, even literature as far as?
Yes, sir. We have literature out there on the stand, and then I'll leave cards as well. Thank you.
Any other questions? Or a comment that you're doing wonderful work, like you've been involved for a number of years in advocating against what's going on with human trafficking throughout the country. Toledo area is a very hotspot, which you're probably aware of, but it's really everywhere. So thank you for doing what you're doing.
Thank you. We partnered also with the Cleveland Task Force. Two Fridays ago, we captured nine women and six children right in downtown. We have a drop-in center at the 100 Agent Superior. Used to be an old key bank. It doesn't have any signage for obvious reasons, but that's a place where we bring the people in to get a hot shower, get food, get education, and then get them hopefully out of that system. Cleveland is the third highest city of all the highway access to human trafficking. Thank you. Yes, sir.
Are you affiliated or with the city mission? Does the city mission have any?
We have some bridging partnerships, but to your question though, sorry, it is a man and woman. We just had a man that we were able to retrieve about a month ago because he saw our billboard when someone that he had that captured him went to the gas station. He remembered the phone number and called us, and we were able to get him back to Chicago where he was from.
I just wanted to say.
Yes, sir.
Outstanding, because when you say the 10 years, that's just baffling, but then I think about how many don't say it at all.
That's right.
So those numbers are probably just out there.
They're staggering.
But hearing that 10 years, it's still like, wow.
Unfortunately, but fortunately, you know, social media is a traitor. It brings up things. So people may see a movie, hear a song, and they say, you know what, I never realized that I was abused or I was put in a position that I wasn't comfortable in. And just to know that we have 24-hour, seven days a week, you know, trained advocates to talk them through that and get them to the road to healing is why I get up every morning.
Yeah, we appreciate your information and what you're doing there. You know, if there's something we can help besides just having these pamphlets out there, let us know.
I'm gonna lean in, yes, sir. Thank you for that.
Thank you for being here.
Thank you. Thank you for all your work. Take care.
Okay, under unfinished business, resolution number 2625-25.
Is a resolution declaring the necessity of assessing the expense of garbage refuse collection, recycling, and disposal within the city of Bedford and certifying to the county auditor the cost due to the city of Bedford for garbage and rubbish collections and declaring an emergency.
And we've had two readings on this already, so I need a motion for suspension. By Spinks, second by Bluehearti. Call the roll, please.
Longino?
Yes.
Coche?
Yes.
Spinks?
Yes.
Salvi?
Yes.
Bluehearti?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Motion for third and final by Smith, second by Longino. Mike?
Hey, Bert.
Jen, you want this?
Don Manu.
Don Manu, both, please.
Thank you, Mayor. This is our annual setting the rates for the next year's refuse collection and assessment to the properties. I did propose a $2 per month increase just to keep up with the cost of refuse that keeps going up. We're trying, almost kind of chasing it, so that's what this is for and looking for the approval so we can get it funded and.
Call the roll, please.
Longino?
Yes.
Coche?
Yes.
Spinks?
Yes.
Salvi?
Yes.
Bluehearti?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Resolution number 2626-25.
Which is a resolution declaring the necessity to improve certain streets in the city of Bedford, Ohio by lighting the same and declaring an emergency.
I believe that's the next three ordinances. Need a motion for suspension?
Yes, sir.
By Spinks, second by Bluehearti. Call the roll, please.
Longino?
Yes.
Coche?
Yes.
Spinks?
Yes.
Salvi?
Yes.
Bluehearti?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Motion for third and final by Smith, second by Longino. Jen, if you want to talk about this in the next.
Actually, well, three at the same time if you'd like. Thank you, Mayor. This one is just basically to declare the necessity to improve the streets by lighting them with streetlights. This is resolution 2626-25. Ordinance 03925, which is the next one, is an ordinance that's determined to proceed with the improvements, is determined to proceed to light the streetlights for the community. And to, and an ordinance 40-25 is to set the assessments to the properties to be able to pay for the streetlighting. So the current rate for this year has been charged to your bills is 1.6 mils, and this rate is gonna be the same for next year as well, and it's based on your property values. Basically, those three in a nutshell.
We need to vote on them separately, so call the roll on the resolution, please.
Longino?
Yes.
Coche?
Yes.
Spinks?
Yes.
Salvi?
Yes.
Bluehearti?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Ordinance number 39-25.
Is an ordinance determined to proceed with the improvement of certain streets in the city of Bedford, Ohio by lighting the same and declaring an emergency.
Motion for suspension by Longino, second by Smith. Call the roll, please.
Longino?
Yes.
Coche?
Yes.
Spinks?
Yes.
Salvi?
Yes.
Bluehearti?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Motion for third and final by Bluehearti, second by Spinks. We had the explanation for that, so call the roll, please.
Longino?
Yes.
Coche?
Yes.
Spinks?
Yes.
Salvi?
Yes.
Bluehearti?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Ordinance number 40-25.
Is an ordinance levying special assessments for the improvement of the street and public places of the city of Bedford by lighting the same in accordance with the prior resolution and the prior ordinance and declaring an emergency.
Need a motion for suspension by Smith, second by Longino. Call the roll, please.
Longino?
Yes.
Coche?
Yes.
Spinks?
Yes.
Salvi?
Yes.
Bluehearti?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Motion for third and final by Bluehearti, second by Spinks. We had the explanations, call the roll, please.
Longino?
Yes.
Coche?
Yes.
Spinks?
Yes.
Salvi?
Yes.
Bluehearti?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Resolution number 2627-25.
Is a resolution approving and accepting the proposed 2025 tax budget for the year January 1st, 2026 to December 31st, 2026, and declaring an emergency.
So I wish to put that on second reading, and I have a motion for such. By Spinks, second by Bluehearti. Jen, if you'd like to explain that. Yeah, short explanation why we're doing that.
We don't talk about things on second reading. No, that's okay. Yes, we had a public hearing for this today at 6:30, and we did have a first reading on May 19th. This is to establish the revenues that we're gonna, especially the tax, for property taxes, the revenues that we're gonna have to use for the appropriations that we're gonna set later this year. So this is gonna allow us to keep the 21.7 mils that we've had since 2009. It's gonna allow us to continue to receive the undivided global government revenue, and we're gonna certificate a vested amount of resources, and that's what's gonna tell us how much money we have to spend. A more reading, and it's gonna be at the next meeting on July 7th.
Call the roll, please.
Longino?
Yes.
Coche?
Yes.
Spinks?
Yes.
Salvi?
Yes.
Bluehearti?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Reports, Mr. Malice.
Thank you, Mayor. A few items I have this evening. First, a quick reminder that Union Street is going to be closed for the next two weeks. That started today. They're gonna be delivering materials to install the temporary utility bridge over Tinkers Creek. Once that's officially done, we'll then move towards the closure of the roadway when they start construction of the permanent bridge. That will most likely take place later this fall, but temporarily it will be closed for 10 days. We are, for those of you, if you recall, we received a substantial grant for improvements to Edelman Community Center. Part of that grant is funding the roof replacement in the gymnasium as well as improvements to the parking lots. We are moving those improvements out until August. Some of that has to do with programming that's already scheduled. We have a summer day camp scheduled with children. We have the Guardians program in camp that's gonna be taking place in June, as well as a number of other items. And especially the roof area, the materials can't be delivered when individuals are in the gymnasium, just for safety precautions, and then not having the adequate parking space makes things challenging. So we are pushing those improvements out until August, and they'll coincide with other maintenance and improvement items interior during that month. We, the municipal pool is scheduled to open this Saturday, June 7th. I want to give a shout out to all of our staff that have been working, you know, around the clock. They've really been there all weekend long. You guys and ladies know who you are. They're doing a really good job to get us where we need to get to. So looking forward to enjoyable summer. Let's hope the weather improves a little bit. Also, we did submit our official CCSP, which is a grant through Cuyahoga County. We've been successful over the last four-plus years in receiving funding that goes towards adult programming, meals, transportation. This upcoming grant cycle, they have also offered another bullet point or bucket that you could use funds for, and that is innovative programming. And we've come up with a number of different proposed ideas. Our submittal was approximately $300,000. We're aiming high. I don't know if we'll get all of that, but that grant application, some are a one-page and others are a binder, and they're a heavy lift, and this is a binder. And just want to acknowledge the staff that put a lot of hard work into that, and we will announce any award once we find out later this year. The city's summer concert series are scheduled to start this Wednesday down at the Public Commons. You'll call, there'll be two concerts. There's a variety, so please check the schedule, check the bands that are scheduled over the next three months. Every other week, there'll be activities down on the Public Commons. Also like to give a shout out to all of our staff in our service department, our parks department, especially staff member Billy Dar for all their efforts that went into preparing town for Memorial Day. It was challenging this spring considering the weather, but they did a, they did a great job. And also want to point out our safety forces. You know, our participation was very noticeable, and I appreciate that. I know City Council does. It's good to have everyone there and participating in that event. So thank you for that. And lastly, just a quick announcement, we're getting an influx of phone calls, and I want to put it out there, animals, specifically dogs, they must be on leashes. Our animal warden over the last week seems to be, you know, flying from one call to another. It's not just in Bedford, you know, we share an animal warden with the city of Bedford Heights, but also speaking with some other colleagues. For some reason, it seems like, you know, all over, people got their dogs loose. There's an ordinance on that, you could receive a citation for that. Please keep your pets on a leash and obviously pick up after your pets as well. So just a quick announcement. Thank you.
Mr. Montel. Say nothing, no report, and I just want to thank the Cleveland Rape Crisis Center for the services they provide and wish you all a happy July 4th, because I don't think we'll see you until July 7th, if I'm not mistaken.
Correct.
So have a happy and safe holiday. End of report.
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to let you know that the police, or the Civil Service Commission is now advertising for patrol officers, both lateral positions and entry-level positions. Go ahead to our website, go ahead to our civil service website or jobs section of our website, and if you're interested or know someone that is interested to apply for that, you can work for the city of Bedford. And also, since John brought it up, about 4th of July coming up before next meeting, and 1st of July, next.
Is there a fire testing?
Not current. Well, there's a, there's an entry, a fire entry list that's on a rolling basis on National Testing Network, if anyone's interested in that, but there's no list being pulled anytime soon.
But there's an active list?
Okay. Uh, Council, Mr. Longino?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I guess I was gonna say, I was gonna start off by talking about the police test, but I guess I won't, I won't talk about that again. Fourth of July, once again, Fourth of July Parade is what I really wanted to talk about. I've been involved with it three times. I mean, being in Bedford all these years, I sat in my corner and watched it, but then I got to march in it as a candidate, and then I got to march in it last year as a council person, but this year it'll be my third one, and I would have a great time, but gotta buy a lot of candy, though, so besides that, but had a great time. Want to talk about the middle school, the ground broke, and they're working on the middle school. Had somebody call me and complain about the noise. It's just the nature of the beast, it's gonna happen. I mean, you can't be all quiet. If it was possible, I think they would do it, but it's not possible, or probable, as I always talk to my kids, so it's gotta happen. On a personal note, March, I mean, excuse me, May 25th, my son had his first daughter, so that was my fourth one, Annalise Lucille. Lucille, I know it sounds like an old name, because it is, it was my mother's, it was my mother's name, so. So Annalise Lucille Thomas was brought into the world, came into the world. Tomorrow, on, like I said, on another personal note, it'll be the first time in 40 years that I, be the last time that I don't do it for. I'll be retiring from Beechwood Police as a resource officer, so, thank you. So, but like I said, I'd be my, I did the police department, I did the military, but that's my second police department, so, like I said, that'll be my last time, so I always say Tony the Cop, as everybody called me, I'll be Tony the Tony. So I'll be Tony the Tony, so, but I've had a ball doing it and encourage anybody that's out there that's even thinking remotely about being a police officer, go ahead and do it, because if you're thinking about it, that means you're a good person, and we always need good people. And I always tell people, the people who hate bad cops more than anybody are good cops. So be a good cop, come out there and become a police officer. With that, I yield my time.
Well, congratulations to you on your retirement.
Yeah.
Mrs. Spinks?
Good evening, and congrats, Mr. Tony, on the grant picking. Always exciting. Um, this past Tuesday, I had the honor of attending the Bedford High School 2025 graduation. I, it was about nine, I call them my Bedford kids, that I have known and mentored throughout the years since they were about five years old. And a lot of times, you know, I don't go on the Facebook pages because they're pretty critical, and a lot of it's not true things, and people that know me, they, they know my character, but there was a nicest, it was a nice surprise that several of my friends shared a thank you from a mother. Young man Joey lives on Flora. I've known him since he was five years old, and it's been just such an honor to watch him grow up through the years, and it felt like it was my own kids walking across that stage and the honors that they got, and bought a few of them, and I'm so proud of Joey, and I'm so proud of Daniel, and I can just name several other kids that I'm so proud of. That's the good part of my job, and thank you to my husband, I'm able to do this job full-time. So also with that, a big shout out to our very own Taylor Drake. She is one of our interns at the Historical Society. She is majoring in history. She is simply amazing. She graduated top of her class in Bedford with over 20. Bedford with over 20 awards and sales. I was going through the book and I was marking, and I showed her and told her how proud I was, and we gave her a card and stuff, and she goes, Ms. Andy, you missed a few. So that's pretty amazing. Has gone all the way through Bedford High School. So our school gets a lot of flack sometimes, but we've got some smart kids. 227 kids graduated, went across that stage. It was packed, it was cold, but I'm so proud of all of y'all. Like I said, this is a good part of my job that I, I just love. With that, let's see next weekend, is it next weekend, the 13th, 14th, and 15th Strawberry Festival. Make sure if you want your strawberry pies, you got to get those orders in to the mayor's wife, Marilyn Coche, by the 13th. There won't be no pie sales at the event. And so exciting with one of our brand new board members, Mr. Tim Taylor, which is also Tim Croft, is calling me up and he says, or texts me and said, hey, what do you think about little John Rinaldi coming to the Strawberry Festival and signing autographs with me at my exhibit? And I was like, well, I think that's a pretty good idea. So on Saturday, June 14th, little John Rinaldi and Jenna Waits, Tim Taylor, are going to be in the, at his exhibit in the museum, the little town hall, signing autographs and telling some funny stories, I'm sure, about Dick Goddard because they love to tell stories about Dick Goddard. So, and then on Sunday, so that again, that's at 2:00. Don't really have an end time. Tim and little John said as long as people are coming in and interested, and as long as they don't get too tired, they'll, they'll stay there as long as they, they can. And then on Sunday, something new this year because with the 15th, all known being Father's Day, and happy Father's Day early to everybody. We're doing a father-child look-alike contest at 1:20. You need information, please come see me. There is no age women. I've had people call from all over the place. I had a guy who's 27. He's thinking me and my dad in, and I was like, sure. So we'll give first, second, and third prizes. No money prizes. Let's see. And also Historical Society will be selling popcorn. Who wants to get the concerts in the commons? Let's see. Special thank you to my little buddy Jamir, who lives on Wondell, who has been for the last two years, he's going in fourth grade, has been helping me pick up trash. So every morning when the bus picks up, he's out there, he's ready to meet Ms. Andy to help pick up trash in the morning, and he's got the other kids doing it too. So Jamir and Ms. Andy is really proud of you, and thank you for getting the other kids concerned about keeping Bedford Kids, kids are, young people are, please remember this summer when you're out, and right now, please stop walking in the middle of the street. The sidewalks are safe because people come flying down the streets. Please stop walking in the middle of the street. Mike covered the dogs. It's been crazy. You'll be getting tons and tons of calls. This month is Cancer Survivor Month, and it's also four years, my husband cancer-free this time, four years ago, he was, yep, he was fighting stem cell, and, and glad we're on this side of it. So, but let's see. Remember, tell people, or when you do it, when you cut your grass, please don't put your grass clippings in the street. Happy 4th of July. End of report.
Thank you. Mr. Salvi.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good evening, evening, everyone. Bedford's Memorial Day Parade and Services. Thank you to the many city staff volunteers, Bedford school bands, local civic, and Bedford organizations, sponsors, and speakers who made Bedford's Memorial Day Parade and Services possible, and I should add excellent. I was glad to see current and former Bedford residents line the parade route and gather at the square and cemetery to honor Bedford and Bedford Township's military dead. I would encourage residents who have never attended a Memorial Day service to do so next year and invite your family. You won't be disappointed. Sidewalks in downtown Bedford. During a recent past council meeting, I mentioned the amount of dirt and debris sitting on or blowing around downtown sidewalks. I suggested the city take up the job of cleaning the sidewalks on occasion if certain Broadway property owners fail to do so as the city ordinance requires. City workers did an exceptional cleaning job a week or two ago. Every crack and crevice seemed to be power washed and no trash was blowing down the sidewalk. The downtown area looked much cleaner, and I think visitors would leave Bedford with an opinion that Bedford well maintains its downtown street scape. Resident visits and calls since the last May council meeting have visited more to residents as well as responding to resident phone inquiries, emails. If you don't hear back from me, most likely you did not get your message. Please call back. One resident left me a voicemail. I may be wrong, but I think she wanted to know if she could plant golden eye phyllox on her tree lawn. Mike or John, is that, are they able to plant plants on the tree lawns?
I'd have to look into that specific. I can get, if you get me that afterwards.
That's true.
I can look into that.
I don't have a phone number to call the person back. That was a problem. Grass citations. I had two residents who complained about the city's side grass citation, city grass cutting. Mike or John, for the benefit of residents, would you please explain the sequence of what is supposed to happen when a citizen complains about a property that is grass weeds high enough to violate the city grass ordinance and the city later mows the grass?
We respond to a complaint or if there's a noticeable violation, we're required to post a notice and place that property owner on notice that they need to resolve that. A photo, or prior to that, they're given, I believe it's two days to take care of that upon when we return. If it is still in violation, then it gets sent to be cut by the city. A photo is taken before, measuring with a measuring device showing the height of that grass, and then a photo is taken afterwards. And then that bill is sent to the property owner. If they fail to pay that bill, it then gets assessed in the fall to their property taxes.
Thank you for that clarification. Section of Solon Road to be closed. Please remember that this section of Solon Road just south of the Bedford Heights wastewater treatment plant will be closed later this week, June 6th, due to the Bedford Heights plant construction. Detour signs are posted. Taff Park, the park remains closed, including the parking lot due to the new playground area construction project. Bay Market, 506 Northfield, the next Bedford Municipal Court hearing regarding the Bay Market property is scheduled for 9:00 a.m. June 16th, and I plan to attend that hearing. Bedford wastewater treatment plant. Thank you to our city manager for tentatively arranging a late June city council tour of the wastewater treatment plant. I think it will be helpful as council and the administration work through the Ohio EPA's regulatory demands, which will likely require a significant financial investment in the plant. Jay Honda dealership construction. I spoke with Ronald Kutchin, owner of Ronald Kutchin Architects regarding the planned new Jay Honda dealership at the corner of Rockside and Barton Road. He told me they're working on the drawings now. He expects construction to begin in late January, excuse me, in January 2026. Lastly, passing a former Bedford firefighter, Chris John Needing the Fourth. My sincere condolences to the entire Needing family, as well as Chris's city of Bedford family on the loss of their loved one and friend who sadly passed away May 24th, 2025. Thank you. End of report.
Thank you. Mr. Fluharty.
Thank you, Mayor. Mike, I got a couple things for you. From Paul Street and John up to Broadway. I know I've texted you about that before. The potholes are getting bigger. They need to come out and fill that. And also, there's another one on Paul and Charles. There's a big pothole unless they filled it already, but as of last week, I don't think they've been out. When are these speed bumps coming in?
We're getting ready to install in the next couple weeks. We met with City of Lakewood because they're not going to be removable. So in order to do it, Lakewood did it, and they went through a trial period. The last thing we want to do is have these damaged. We spent a substantial amount of money. So I, I believe they're scheduled to start next week, but I can confirm that and put that in the weekly memo.
Okay. We still putting one in each ward right now to start off?
Yes, at each of the locations.
End of report. Thank you. Mr. Smith.
Good evening. Welcome to all, all of you. This is the first time here. You're always welcome to come to our city council meetings. We, we, we like for, to see, get the feedback from other people, people who don't come. Like to hear what you have to say. As I have been saying for the past couple of weeks, it's sold out. It's about to be summer. Well, summer is here. Watch for our children. School isn't out yet, but it will be, I think, this week. So you have to watch out for our children. And thinking and hearing what representative from the Ray Price Center had to say, it's usually like 10 years or something, or you know, people just don't say nothing. But while you out there, not only watch out for our children, just walking the streets or in the street this summer, make sure that they are all right. It doesn't hurt to ask, are you all right? As, as, as she said, like I said, it astounds me to think that it would take that long or certain triggers make that happen. So once again, watch out for our children in the street. Make sure that they're safe as they're out there this summer. Please attend the 4th of July parade. This is the parade for all the children that come so they can get some candy. They mix it up. They mix it up. They think our parades, like Memorial Day parade, that they're going to be giving out candy. Those, that's a solemn event. So make sure you're out there. Be hydrated, stay hydrated. Even though I know for the past couple of years, I think the Saint Temple, they have a whole semi, whole semi of water. They're giving out, that's what they give out. They don't give out candy. They give out water. Keep people hydrated.
Thank you. I think most everything was covered again. Memorial Day Parade was terrific and thanks to all of our city guys that went out and made the town look really good. I know Billy Darley, you mentioned, I drove by on Sunday afternoon and he was at the square, straightening things up all on his own. And we have a bunch of guys like that that are really into taking care of the city. So give him a special thanks, but a thanks to all of the service department getting ready and the police and fire for their participation and it's a good solemn parade. It was, according to Mike Guyer, who's one of the military groups that helps put this parade together, he said it was our 168th or 169th parade. That's a lot. I mean, that goes back to, it was right after Civil War, and that they've been doing this parade. It's, it's just amazing. Every year when we go there, they'd know I wasn't in all of them. I was in a lot of them, but not all. So with that, let's get down to business. Resolution number 262925.
Is a resolution to adopt the solid waste management plan for the Cuyahoga County Solid Waste Management District.
And I have a motion for suspension by Spinks, second by Fluharty. Call a roll, please.
Longino?
Yes.
Coche?
Yes.
Spinks?
Yes.
Salvi?
Yes.
Fluharty?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Motion for third and final by Longino, second by Smith. Mike?
Thank you, Mayor. The Cuyahoga County Solid Waste District is required under Ohio law to adopt a plan every four years. They actually put this plan together in August of 2024. It was submitted to the Ohio EPA for review. Since then, they've incorporated the Ohio EPA's comments. They've held public meetings, and now all municipalities, townships and villages are required to adopt this plan by August. They outline a number of different tasks. Education services, they'll be providing community services and programs, as well as expanded programs such as grants for communities. There's volunteer-based programs, scrap tire, household roundup, a lot that has to do with recycling. They do provide a lot of analytics for us when it comes to recycling and the data that comes into the city. And as you know, that's very important for us because the amount that's recycled, it lowers the amount of tonnage that we get charged and thus lowers our overall refuse collection piece. So it is the city's recommendation to adopt this plan this evening, which is a requirement under Ohio law.
Call a roll, please.
Longino?
Yes.
Coche?
Yes.
Spinks?
Yes.
Salvi?
Yes.
Fluharty?
Yes.
Smith?
If anybody wants to look at the Solid Waste District's proposal, you're welcome to take a peek at that. Quite extensive. Ordinance number 44-25.
Is an ordinance authorizing a contract with Cargill for sodium chloride, otherwise known as rock salt, for the 2025-2026 winter and declaring an emergency?
Motion for suspension by Smith, second by Longino. Call a roll, please.
Longino?
Yes.
Coche?
Yes.
Spinks?
Yes.
Salvi?
Yes.
Fluharty?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Motion for third and final by Spinks, second by Fluharty. Mike?
Thank you, Mayor. This is a consortium that the city has joined as far as partnering to bid out quantities for next year's salt purchase. We have to provide an estimate every year. Our estimate for purchase is going to be 3,600 tons per the agreement with the consortium. We are committing to purchasing 80% of that number, but we do have the ability to go up to 140% of the amount, which takes us over 5,000 tons in the event that it is a bad winter. That would have been very important considering this past winter to be, to go up that high. The estimated, or the bid price through Cargill for next year is $61.40 per ton. That is an increase of what we had this year, which was just under $50. I believe it was $48 and change per ton.
Questions? Call a roll, please.
Longino?
Yes.
Coche?
Yes.
Spinks?
Yes.
Salvi?
Yes.
Fluharty?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Ordinance number 45-25.
It's authorizing the city manager to contract with Stryker Medical Devices for the purchase of LifePak CR2 AED devices and declaring an emergency.
And motion for suspension by Fluharty, second by Spinks. Call a roll, please.
Longino?
Yes.
Coche?
Yes.
Spinks?
Yes.
Salvi?
Yes.
Fluharty?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Motion for third and final by Smith, second by Longino. Mike?
Thank you, Mayor. This purchase is for 20 of the AED LifePak devices. There's actually one right out in the hallway here. The city has a number of these in multiple departments. Many of these are approaching end of life. As we looked at that, we've also identified a number of other locations where these devices should be placed. For instance, not only Bedford City Hall and Bedford Municipal Court, but we should also have multiple units in each of our police cruisers, replacing the devices at the Ellwood Center. The community pool also have some portable devices that we could take with us. Ultimately, the city was awarded This is a consortium that the city has joined as far as partnering to bid out quantities for next year's salt purchase. We have to provide an estimate every year. Our estimate for purchase is going to be 3,600 tons per the agreement with the consortium. We are committing to purchasing 80% of that number, but we do have the ability to go up to 140% of the amount, which takes us over 5,000 tons in the event that it is a bad winter. That would have been very important considering this past winter, to be, to go up that high. The estimated, or the bid price through Cargill, Cargill for next year is $61.40 per ton. That is an increase of what we had this year, which was just under $50. I believe it was $48 and change per ton.
Questions? Call a roll, please.
Longino?
Yes.
Coche?
Yes.
Spinks?
Yes.
Salvy?
Yes.
Fluharty?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Motion for third and final by Smith, second by Fluharty. Mike?
Thank you, Mayor. This is a consortium that the city has joined as far as partnering to bid out quantities for next year's salt purchase. We have to provide an estimate every year. Our estimate for purchase is going to be 3,600 tons per the agreement with the consortium. We are committing to purchasing 80% of that number, but we do have the ability to go up to 140% of the amount, which takes us over 5,000 tons in the event that it is a bad winter. That would have been very important considering this past winter, to be, to go up that high. The estimated, or the bid price through Cargill, Cargill for next year is $61.40 per ton. That is an increase of what we had this year, which was just under $50. I believe it was $48 and change per ton.
Questions? Call a roll, please.
Longino?
Yes.
Coche?
Yes.
Spinks?
Yes.
Salvy?
Yes.
Fluharty?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Motion for third and final by Smith, second by Longino. Mike?
Thank you, Mayor. This purchase is for 20 of the AED Life Pack devices. There's actually one right out in the hallway here. The city has a number of these in multiple departments. Many of these are approaching end of life. As we looked at that, we've also identified a number of other locations where these devices should be placed. For instance, not only Bedford City Hall and Bedford Municipal Court, but we should also have multiple units in each of our police cruisers, replacing the devices at the Ellenwood Center, the community pool. Also have some portable devices that we could take with us. Ultimately, the city was awarded slightly over $48,000 in opioid settlement funds. Those funds were previously put in a separate line item because they have restrictions on what those funds can be utilized for. One of those uses is for the purchase of these AED, AED devices. So while it's important to update the devices that are reaching their end of life, it's also important that we install some of these at some of the additional locations that I mentioned and that we utilize the opioid settlement dollars for this purchase and thus not affecting the general fund.
Thank you. Questions? Call a roll, please.
Longino?
Yes.
Coche?
Yes.
Spinks?
Yes.
Salvy?
Yes.
Fluharty?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Motion for third and final by Smith, second by Fluharty. Mike?
Thank you, Mayor. This is a consortium that the city has joined as far as partnering to bid out quantities for next year's salt purchase. We have to provide an estimate every year. Our estimate for purchase is going to be 3,600 tons per the agreement with the consortium. We are committing to purchasing 80% of that number, but we do have the ability to go up to 140% of the amount, which takes us over 5,000 tons in the event that it is a bad winter. That would have been very important considering this past winter, to be, to go up that high. The estimated, or the bid price through Cargill, Cargill for next year is $61.40 per ton. That is an increase of what we had this year, which was just under $50. I believe it was $48 and change per ton.
Questions? Call a roll, please.
Longino?
Yes.
Coche?
Yes.
Spinks?
Yes.
Salvy?
Yes.
Fluharty?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Motion for third and final by Smith, second by Fluharty. Mike?
Thank you, Mayor. This is a consortium that the city has joined as far as partnering to bid out quantities for next year's salt purchase. We have to provide an estimate every year. Our estimate for purchase is going to be 3,600 tons per the agreement with the consortium. We are committing to purchasing 80% of that number, but we do have the ability to go up to 140% of the amount, which takes us over 5,000 tons in the event that it is a bad winter. That would have been very important considering this past winter, to be, to go up that high. The estimated, or the bid price through Cargill, Cargill for next year is $61.40 per ton. That is an increase of what we had this year, which was just under $50. I believe it was $48 and change per ton.
Questions? Call a roll, please.
Longino?
Yes.
Coche?
Yes.
Spinks?
Yes.
Salvy?
Yes.
Fluharty?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Motion for third and final by Smith, second by Fluharty. Mike?
Thank you, Mayor. This is a consortium that the city has joined as far as partnering to bid out quantities for next year's salt purchase. We have to provide an estimate every year. Our estimate for purchase is going to be 3,600 tons per the agreement with the consortium. We are committing to purchasing 80% of that number, but we do have the ability to go up to 140% of the amount, which takes us over 5,000 tons in the event that it is a bad winter. That would have been very important considering this past winter, to be, to go up that high. The estimated, or the bid price through Cargill, Cargill for next year is $61.40 per ton. That is an increase of what we had this year, which was just under $50. I believe it was $48 and change per ton.
Questions? Call a roll, please.
Longino?
Yes.
Coche?
Yes.
Spinks?
Yes.
Salvy?
Yes.
Fluharty?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Before we get to hearing the citizens, I just want to bring up, Mr. Salvy mentioned about the loss of the firefighter, Chris Needing, who was retired several years ago and died a little too young. He was a great guy. Hard to replace him and he was hired back in May of 1988 and former Chief Duber and I had the privilege to hire him. And the best guy's in an apartment, one of the toughest, not the biggest guy, but I wouldn't mess with him. But he was a good guy and he was great to his family and his kids. And his one son is actually the assistant chief in Delaware, Columbia, just outside of Columbus, so. And then, because his dad was a volunteer firefighter for many years in North Canton, so runs in the family. But we're, we're going to miss him and again, condolences to the family. It was a terrific service they had for him and certainly going to be missed. With that, we come to the hearing of citizens. If you wish to speak, please come forward, state your name, your address and your telephone number, your address. Comment. I was drifting off there.
Taffville 134, Herrmann. I just had a question in light of what happened in Green Memorial Day. If the city is making or having restrictions on floats for the 4th of July parade and going forward from that?
We've had some initial discussions, but there's been nothing put in place yet. It's just been preliminary discussions with our safety forces.
What's horrible, isn't it?
The greater future and you're always there. Thank you for your service, everyone, and the information that was given out and here by our graduates, that was beautiful. My question is, oh, I wanted to say, last time I was here, Mike, you had mentioned something about me painting a profile of a situation and I did not, I have not had peace with that because I am not a liar. I speak the truth and most of the time that's why I get in trouble is just because of speaking truth. So I just wanted to state that on record. The next thing, I wanted to mention about the innovative program, some funding, and I'm wondering if this would be an opportunity for the community to come to the table and speak about new ideas. I have my neighbor with me and he's young, but he's very smart. He has great ideas and that's what I'm about. I'm, I mean, I'm a senior. I'm, I'm tired, but I will never, ever give up for our youth. And I don't have to be part of an organization or a program to help. I, I, I love helping. That's what I do. That's what I live for. And so my question is, will there be an opportunity for the community to come to the table? And let's listen to the youth, let's listen to the parents of the youth to see what ideas we can come up with to build and expand Bedford. It's a beautiful thing that you guys are doing over there. I, I love the Bedford downtown. It reminds me of where I grew up. And to have an opportunity to do innovative things, it's an open door that I think we need to get to the table. And let's have conversations about what the citizens and the youth would like, and the families would like to see. That's my question.
Yeah, we're always open to talking about things.
Okay. And so at what point would this be, would this, you know what I mean? Because I found out something at the Bedford rec about something getting reimbursed for $75. I didn't know. I come to the council meetings and I did not know that. So my, my question is, how are we going to get this out if, when that happens? So not only me, but other people will be aware of it in a timely manner where we can schedule it and be present.
We can share some, if you're referring to the rebate program that we offer for Bedford Heights Community Center.
Right.
We could do, we could do a more detailed release to get that information out to the public so they're aware of it. That's been in place for many years, actually, a couple of decades. This council just recently increased it. It used to be $50 a reading, so we increased it to 75. I think it was in response, because I believe Bedford Heights raised their, their fees. Don't quote me on that, but I think that's where we adjusted it about a year or two ago. We can put that information out more so the public's aware of it. I think as far as if someone has a thought or an idea, as far as a program, you know, we're very accessible. Feel free to take my card if you want to contact me, if you want to contact anyone through Parks and Rec as far as, you know, program ideas, you know, we're, we're always listening. But there isn't, I mean, as far as are we going to have a public hearing of, you know, that's not in the works as of right now, a public hearing to as far as what we want.
But what about, okay, you're saying what you want, but I'm telling you what the citizens